Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to begin our council session this morning with an invocation. We're joined this morning by Reverend Tim Warner from the Montgomery County Office of Community Partnerships from Rockville, and it's so great to see you here this morning. Reverend Warner, welcome, and could you all please stand?
Let every heart pray. Gracious God, we are grateful for another day's journey and for the privilege of living in this community, for the awesome responsibility of being citizens in it. We pray today, God, for every official in this room, not only those whom we have elected to serve, but those whom we have employed to administrate. We ask in your great name today that you would bless us with wisdom. We pray, Lord God, that you would bless them with wisdom to make decisions that are worthy of who you are. We pray, Lord God, that they would make decisions today based on the needs of those who are the neediest among us, with hope for a better community. And we ask today that needs be met today, that you be present in every aspect of what is done in this room, and we'll be grateful and give your name honor. Thank you again, Lord God, for this day, in your great name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend Warner. We now have a presentation, a proclamation and recognition of White Cane Safety Day, by Council President Irvin and Council Member Andrews, and Council Member Andrews will do the honors.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to ask Charles Short and Charlie Short and Debbie Brown to join me. Good morning. One of the great honors of serving on the county council is to help recognize important occasions and to recognize people who are serving as role models in their community. The county has strived for many years to be an inclusive employer and a place where all are welcome, and today we are recognizing White Cane Safety Day, and we have representatives here, Debbie Brown, who is representing the National Federation for the Blind, and Charlie Short, who is a county employee of longstanding and who contacts me regularly about his concerns in county government, and who is the son of Charles Short, who served for many years at very high levels in the county. So it's my pleasure on behalf of the county council to present a proclamation that recognizes White Cane Safety Day and reminds us to be especially vigilant when we see people walking with white canes in our community because of their increased vulnerability to being a victim of vehicular collision. And so, the proclamation states, "Whereas, the history of the white cane is traced to Europe in the early 20th century, and its introduction in North America has been attributed to 1930, when a member of the Lions Club International, in watching a blind man attempt to make his way across a busy street using a black cane, realized that cane was barely visible to motorists, and the club decided to paint his cane white to increase its visibility to oncoming motorists. And whereas, the white cane is an important tool for self-reliance and full participation and inclusion in our society, and along with guide dogs and public and private transportation programs, these combine to allow the blind or visually impaired to travel efficiently and safely, breaking down barriers to success and helping independence. And whereas, the public is reminded that persons carrying a white cane or using a guide dog are legally blind and have equal rights under the law to housing, lodging, amusement, and public transportation. And whereas motorists should remember that the law requires drivers to exercise particular care when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas, it also is appropriate this time to remind employers that when blind persons receive proper instruction and genuine opportunity, they can compete on equal terms with sighted persons and are in fact employed within the broad spectrum of labor and the professions." Now therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Council hereby proclaims October 15, 2011, as White Cane Safety Day in Montgomery County, and commends the efforts of the National Federation of the Blind in this its 67th year, and is presented today on behalf of the county council, signed by Valerie Irvin, Council President. Thank you for joining us today, and I'd like to ask if you'd like to make a few remarks. There we go.
All right. Thank you. I will have some handouts for you, all of the council, before you leave. Thank you, Council Member Andrews, for that. The white cane has a long history that we heard of, part of it, and the original white cane laws came into being because somebody was, a driver was driving his car on the sidewalk, and a blind person was injured, and the courts at first decided that the blind person shouldn't be out in public and alone in the first place, and that needed to change. So that's why we have laws protecting people carrying white canes and using guide dogs. And of course, we have expanded our views of what ought to happen in the world, you know, in this proclamation discussed employment, and lately we have been speaking to the county. If your website's not accessible, you're going to hear from us, and I'm glad that Mr. Short and Chuck Short and Charlie Short could be here with us today, because Charlie needs to help keep that county government honest.
He does.
So we will be, when your software is not accessible, you're going to hear from us. We have expanded what it means to participate in society, and we thank you for honoring the White Cane Safety Day. And I have to, for all of the council people, this is a copy of a book of letters to President Obama about braille, and it was written in 2009, and it contains letters from various children and adults about braille. And Montgomery County's been pretty good at teaching its students braille, so, but one of your county employees does have a letter in there, so I would like to pass that out for all of the council people. Thank you.
That's great. I will make sure everyone gets one.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
And Charlie, please. There you go. Go ahead, Charlie. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be here. It's a pleasure for the county council for including us. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Honored to represent you on the county council, Charlie, and thanks for all the good work you do for the people of Montgomery County.
Next up, we have a presentation. It's a proclamation and recognition of Nivea Cordoba Berrios, countless contributions to the residents of Montgomery County and her dedication to Montgomery County public school students by Council Member Navarro. And where is...
She's right there.
...Nivea Berrios. Hi, Nivea.
Yes. I'd like to ask her supporters who also come up, friends that are here.
Good morning, Nivea. Well-deserved recognition.
Great. Well, good morning. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and many contributions of American citizens of Latino and/or Hispanic background, the ones, whatever contributions they're making and have made in this county and this country. This year's theme is "Many Backgrounds, Many Stories, One American Spirit." It is true, we come from many backgrounds, and all of our stories are different, but we share one common denominator, one American spirit. The American spirit is to give back to our communities. This spirit is extraordinarily exemplified by Mrs. Nivea Cordoba Berrios. Nivea started her career in her native Puerto Rico, working with the poor and underprivileged. For the last 22 years, she has worked in the Montgomery County schools as a teacher, resource teacher, supervisor, and director. During the last 11 years, as supervisor of the International Student Admissions Office and Director of the Residency and International Admissions, she has developed an exemplary program serving thousands of international students, with residency needs and homeless students as well. It is for her countless contributions to the residents of Montgomery County and her dedication to the Montgomery County Public Schools, students, and families, that I present this proclamation to Nivea Cordoba Berrios. And it reads like this. Whereas, Nivea Cordoba Berrios is an exemplary educator, effective community advocate, and successful community leader in Montgomery County; and whereas, her passion is to advocate for the special needs population and those constituencies that have been underrepresented in positions of leadership; and whereas, during the past 22 years as a teacher, resource specialist, supervisor, and in her current position as Director of Residency and International Admission in Montgomery County Public Schools, she used her experiences to develop programs serving thousands of international students, students with residency needs and homeless students; and whereas, her contributions and expertise has had a system-wide impact by fostering the academic success of thousands of students and the adjustment of their families to their new living environment; and whereas, her substantial improvement in the efficiency of the enrollment processes for international students in MCPS are considered exemplary in the trade and a model to other jurisdictions in the nation; and whereas, she is a co-author of two important documents, the National Primary-Secondary Foreign School Systems and the National Grading Scales, which standardize procedures in the admission of international students and are the only standards in the field, which are used by many public schools' jurisdictions in the United States, including more than 28 school systems in Maryland and Virginia. Now therefore, be it resolved that the County Council of Montgomery County hereby recognizes Nivea Cordoba Berrios for her countless contributions to the residents of Montgomery County and her dedication to Montgomery County Public School students, especially new American students, and their families, presented on this 11th day of October in the year 2011 and signed by Valerie Irvin, Council President. And I just want to say, just a personal note, that, you know, Nivea will be retiring in December, I understand, and I think that her imprint and her legacy will be felt for many, many years into the future here in Montgomery County. Nivea has not only been an amazing professional, but she's also been a friend to many families and many students that have walked through those doors of the International Student Office, residency compliance, they changed the name, but I still call it International Student Office, and it's not an easy thing. It is not an easy thing to make families feel welcome, families that come from all over the world, and explain to them our system, and do it in a way that respects their differences and commonalities. And so, Nivea, you are definitely a trailblazer, and I think an amazing example of the contributions that our Latino-Americans make to this county and this country. Congratulations.
I'd like to say a few words. She's a very, very shy person, so I had to force her to say a few words.
Well, as you can see, I have a lot of fan club here, so, but in reality, I am most grateful to God for giving the opportunity to serve all of you. But before I read these few words, I want to say that Nancy is a real, genuine person, an inspiration and role model to our Hispanic parents and children, and I want to congratulate you, Nancy. I just read that you were appointed by President Obama to the President's Advisory Commission on Hispanic Education, which means a lot to Montgomery County. I also want to thank the best mayor of the best city of the United States, my friend, Sidney Katz, for being here for me today, and Kathy Trisgula, Council Member. I also want to thank especially Don Kress. He is a brother and also a top person from Montgomery County Public Schools in the past and in the present. And Don, I know you said that one of your few mistakes was to hire me as a resource teacher at Springburg. I know that. I want to thank also Charlie Short. He's my friend. Charlie, I love you, you know that. I feel, I think we are the best friends. I also want to thank Gladys and Britta San Maria Guerrero, my neighbors and family, and also Dr. Brenda Will C. Shear with us. I also want to, I am so proud of my staff, and because I don't want to take more time, I want to read what I wrote, and I wrote it from my heart. Honorable Madam President Valerie Irvin, Council Members, my beloved staff, my dear family, friends, and neighbors of Montgomery County, you humble me with this general's recognition, which belongs not to me, but to the parents and children, which I have been privileged to know during my years of service as an educator in my beloved county. You make me feel important. I am not. I have said it on their behalf and shall wear it proudly as a badge of honor. Many years ago, I came to Montgomery County with my late husband Raymond, and with the light of my life, my two minor children, Francisco Roberto and Raymoncito, seeking the American dream. We came with hopes and dreams of a better future for our children, especially for my smallest, young, autistic, beautiful child. Our vision of the United States of America was the shining star at the top of the hill. This was our vision of this great general's land. Our capital was limited to our few earthly possessions and our professional skills. Some wonderful and kind people like Don offered a helping hand and gave me the opportunity to serve as an educator in our excellent public school system. Many general's mentors always offer kind, worldwide suggestions, timely, moral support and assistance in opening doors of hope, goodwill, and successful outcomes with my clientele, my beloved children's and their parents. I plowed and planted seeds of learning, kindness, and love in the fertile minds of our county's children, yours and mine. Every single day at school and in office for 22 years in Montgomery County Public Schools, I accepted this opportunity to serve with profound appreciation and gratitude, driving my indomitable spirit. I chose to live resisting adversity rather than submitting. There were plenty of challenges in the way, human frailties, discrimination, ignorance, and unhelpful resistance. In the midst of my darkest hours, my mother's teachings sustained my spirit. No, one woman can't change anything. Many women can change everything. I am a living example of such works of wisdom. Today, may I leave you with this thought in the midst of our troubling days of financial and political challenges in our society. We, the millions of women educators in the schools of this great country, can fix everything that is wrong with our schools, one by one, one student at a time. May God continue to bless Montgomery County and the United States of America, the last best hope for humanity in Planet Earth. Thank you so much.
Charlie, I need you here. Charlie, I need you, Charlie.
Okay, it's no fair to... Everyone's smiling. A few more. A lot of years here. Big finish, everyone's smiling. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Nivea. You've made a very profound impact on so many people, those who know and love you and those who will never know your name, and we know you're not going to be far away, so congratulations. Okay, on to the next presentation, a proclamation and recognition of the Big Train, for being ranked number one summer team in the nation by Council Members Florine and Berliner.
So if we could invite the honchos to come on down, we'll move on to some more mundane issues, but equally important on other fronts.
There's nothing about baseball that's mundane.
Come on up, everybody. Come on, Mike.
Bruce Adams really needs to take center stage for this, because we would not be celebrating Bethesda Big Train if it were not for Bruce Adams. So, before we start, let's just have a little round of applause for Bruce, because Bruce has brought the sport of summer and the sport of affordable fund for families to Montgomery County in a way that we never would have believed was possible. How long ago was that? 20 years ago? 13 years ago. So I'm very pleased to be here with Council Member Berliner. We have Adam Dantis. Okay, you're the new general manager. So Colangelo was the general manager during the winning season, and our own, who's that guy in the end here with the shirt and the hat? Mr. Glenn Orland, the official scorer, here to celebrate the finest season in Bethesda Big Train baseball history. And we have Randy Schools, who's the booster club president. Thank you, Randy. And of course, we have Homer, who's well dressed for the occasion. Council Member Berliner, would you like to make some opening remarks?
Just very briefly, number one in the nation. We liken Montgomery County when we're number one, and so we are grateful that we are number one in the nation. First time our team has been number one in the nation. This is an incredibly competitive league, and of course, pitching was the mainstay of our team, and of course, pitching is so important. I believe 36 and 9 was the record, three All-Americans, Hunter Renfro, Matt Bowman, and Adam Berry, and this is a team and a league that breeds professionals, and so we are looking forward to seeing these young men continue in pursuing this wonderful sport, and we are pleased to be here and honor them for their achievements.
And not only that, I mean, this is probably the most successful community partnership in Montgomery County. If you look at the list of contributors to the Big Train team, the businesses, the community groups, it is a real tribute to how many people have put in time and money and photographic skills, scoring skills, and the like, to make this such a great experience for everyone. So, sparing no expense, we have a paper proclamation. And Council Member Berliner, shall we take turns reading this? Is that okay with you? So, "Whereas, the Bethesda Big Train finished its 2011 season not only by winning its third consecutive Cal Ripken Collegiate Baseball League Championship," we didn't even mention that, "but also by being named the number one summer collegiate baseball league team in the nation, and..."
"Whereas, in years past, the Bethesda Big Train has ranked among the top 10 teams nationwide, but this year marks the team's first number one finish according to Perfect Game USA, the only organization that ranks the approximately 350 summer collegiate teams across the country, and..."
"Whereas, in a season marked by depth, hard work, and confidence, the Big Train, which began play at Shirley Povich Field in Cabin John Regional Park in 1999, rivaled teams from storied leagues with rich histories." Well, now we have one too, right. And...
"Whereas, the Bethesda Big Train, which is named for the nickname of Washington Senators Hall of Fame pitcher and former Bethesda resident and Montgomery County Commissioner, Walter Johnson, is the driving force behind the fundraising efforts of the Bethesda Community Baseball Club, an organization dedicated to improving the quality of youth baseball and softball fields in Montgomery County and the District of Columbia, and..."
"Whereas, Big Train players who play for colleges across the country are winners, not only in the field, but off it as well, taking the time to teach local athletes and serve as role models the whole community can admire, and..."
"Whereas, 34 former Big Train players have used their Bethesda experiences to advance up to playing professional baseball, and there's much reason to expect that same sort, excuse me, that some of this year's players will join that exclusive club."
"Now therefore, be it resolved that the County Council of Montgomery County, Maryland, hereby recognizes and honors the 2011 Bethesda Big Train for steaming its way to the number one ranking in the nation, presented on this 11th day of October in the year 2011 and signed by our Council President Valerie Irvin." So, way to go, guys. Now, because we're short, because of the fiscal situation, we do not have peanuts and Cracker Jacks, but we do have time for speeches, so if, who would like to say something? Mr. Schools?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, real quick, and then Bruce. But just on behalf of the Big Train family that's in back of me here at the moment, we just thank the county council, the citizens of Montgomery County, as well as the people who really support baseball. It's a wonderful opportunity, and hats off to the vision of Johnny Warsman and Bruce Adams for making this happen in our community. It's a wonderful, just some quick facts. We have over 1,400 volunteers that have helped with this, led by Bill Hickman... And on my right, as we face out, is Pat Malone, who is the executive director of the Cal Ripken Senior League. And our whole period thing that we try to do is bring the beautiful sport of baseball to our community. Some other key points is that we have nonprofit nights sponsored by the Carol Traywick Foundation, and Carol has stepped up to the plate using the baseball thing to help us just constantly bring nonprofits, people that really never get the opportunity to see baseball, to come, and that's been a big part of it. Homer's literacy program, Homer visits the various libraries here in the county, and that's a wonderful opportunity in trying to get fundamentals to reading, involve with all the people. We also have given boxes of gloves, bats, and balls to the Dominican Republic, and it made our world smaller and hopefully will help you realize the importance of baseball all over the world. So a big thanks to everybody. The key point is, we've raised over six hundred, the people behind us, and I think that's our mission, we've raised over $600,000 to put back into better fields and better places here for the youth of Montgomery County. And hopefully that'll continue on and on, because as you know, the County Council doesn't have the wherewithal to do a lot of things, and we step up and we try to make sure that all the youth in the area have good fields to play on. I'd like to turn it over to Bruce Adams, who is the vision behind this and brought us all together.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. This is one of those great, wonderful stories where everything worked and all the pieces fell together. I want to mention Bill Hussman. He was the head of Park and Planning when we were doing this, and I have never met or worked with a more creative entrepreneurial public official in my life. And Bill didn't know a thing about baseball and not much about sports, but he got community, and he understood entrepreneurship, and he understood partnerships, and he took a chance on us, and it has really worked beautifully. Our business community, John Orsman stepped up and put together the million and a half dollars we needed to build Shirley Povich Field. I hate to think what the cost of this field would have been had it run through the normal capital budgeting process of this county. But we did this with incredible generosity from Miller &amp; Long, Sandy Spring Builders, Hopkins &amp; Porter, and others. The business community really stepped up. Tex Design, Lido Pizza, Honesty, on and on, have Bean Bag Deli. All these businesses have stepped up and been part of this incredible partnership. We have had just a wonderful fan base and incredible, as Randy mentioned, volunteer base. Randy's been the head of the Booster Club from the very beginning. Steve Farber's sitting over there quietly as a representative of our wonderful host families. We're bringing twenty-five to thirty kids in from all over the country, and they stay with folks like the Farbers. Glenn has been our official scorekeeper from the beginning. So the council family is well represented at Povich Field. And our wonderful manager, who is not here because he is in the public school system in Virginia, Sal Colangelo. But what Sal learned and what we know is that summer college baseball is about recruiting. And he has recruited folks, about a third of our team comes from California. We have folks from all over the country come here to this wonderful county to show their skills and be role models for our children. And so we thank Sal. And finally, our fans, you know, if you go out to Povich Field on a June or July summer night, there's six hundred, eight hundred, a thousand people getting to watch wooden bat summer college baseball. And so we are very grateful to our fans, and we're grateful to the County Council for recognizing what we've done here. And next June and July, we'll be back, and we hope better than ever. So thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Got a photo here? Did we get you?
I want to make sure I get Homer's best. Everybody make sure I see you. Don't hide behind anyone.
Who is that, number twenty-five? Okay, on to general business. I'm going to call on the clerk, Madam Clerk.
Just one change to note at introduction of Bill thirty-three-eleven, Urban Renewal and Community Development, Community Benefits Agreements for Large Retail Stores. The public hearing date is changed. It'll be November first at seven-thirty. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Let's approve the minutes.
Moved by Councilmember Leventhalke, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. That's unanimous, gentlemen, council members? Thank you. That is unanimous among those present. On to item three, Consent Calendar. I need a motion. It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. Are there any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent calendar, please signify by raising your hands. And that is also unanimous among those present.
Ms. Florine was here.
I see her. She was here and voted in the affirmative. We're on legislative session day number twenty-nine, introduction of bills, item number four, Bill thirty-three-eleven, Urban Renewal and Community Development, Community Benefits Agreements, Large Retail Stores, sponsored by myself, Council President, and Councilmembers Navarro, Rice, and Reamer. There is a public hearing scheduled for November the first, 2011, at seven-thirty, and I'd like to take a few, thank you very much, and we have now added as a co-sponsor, Councilmember Elrich. I would like to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about the bill that I am sponsoring. This legislation would require community benefits agreements for retailers located in Montgomery County that have indoor retail space of seventy-five thousand square feet or larger. The bill also codifies community benefits coalitions, which are broad-based community groups made up of individuals and entities that reflect the interests of the neighboring communities where big box retail stores are seeking to locate. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the hard-working men and women representing UFCW Local 400 there in the back of the room with yellow t-shirts on, and I want to thank them for their hard work, not only here in Montgomery County, but across the region, as they advocate on behalf of working families in regard to big box retailers and the impact that big box retailers have on the local economy, especially local small businesses. And I wanted to take a moment to just talk a little bit about big box retailers and why I think it's important to move forward on this legislation. And that is, I want to talk a minute about store size caps. We're seeking to cap the size of these big box stores here in Montgomery County to seventy-five thousand square feet and larger. In our neighboring jurisdictions, Washington, DC, they're seeking to do something very similar, and Arlington County is about to also move legislation that prohibits anything from fifty thousand square feet and larger that has to have a community benefits agreement. So there are dozens of cities and towns across the country that have enacted these local ordinances, and store size caps are not discriminatory because we're not trying to ban these retailers such as Home Depot and Target, rather mandate that these companies build stores that are an appropriate size for the community that they would like to locate in. And store size caps are legal. Through their land use zoning ordinances, cities across the country have long had the power to control the scale of development by, for example, limiting building heights or setting minimum house lot sizes. So just to give you an example of what, how big is too big, an average Rite Aid store is thirteen thousand square feet. An average Barnes &amp; Noble store is twenty-five thousand square feet. An average Best Buy store is thirty-seven thousand square feet, and supermarkets range anywhere from ten thousand square feet to ninety thousand square feet, and the average size is forty-four thousand square feet. Now, just imagine the size of a football field in relation to this. A football field is fifty-seven thousand square feet. An average Home Depot is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet, and Walmart supercenters range from ninety-nine thousand square feet to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet with an average size of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet. So this bill seeks to control the size, and if these big box retailers want to move into our community, they can do so. And in this bill, it just basically says they have to sign a binding agreement with the community, and the community has a major say in what that store looks like and how big it is, who gets hired, whether or not the building is green, whether it's LEED certified, et cetera. So I'm very happy to be joined by four other colleagues on this legislation. I think that there will be a lot of conversation coming up in the work session. So again, I want to thank UFCW Local 400 because prior to any of us hearing about a Walmart coming to Aspen Hill, I had been talking with UFCW Local 400 for several months prior to this supercenter trying to come into Aspen Hill. So we'll be having a lot of conversations with the community and with council members as we move forward on this legislation. So thank you all, and there are no other comments. So we'll move on to the district council session. Item number five, Action, Requests for Oral Argument and/or Hearing Examiners' Report and Recommendation, Local Map Amendment G-892, Chelsea Residential Associates EYA Development LLC, Evanswood 630 Ellsworth Drive, Silver Spring, and Council Staff, Jeff Zients, is in front of me, so I'm going to look to you for your leadership and give me direction as we move forward on this item.
Okay. Before you and in your packet, you had a request for oral argument. You also had a request to deny oral argument. You can do either. If you deny oral argument, you have to, you generally go into a discussion and resolution of the issue before you today, and if you go in on the merits, you can decide to approve, deny, or remand. You cannot choose to amend a zoning text amendment, a local map amendment. If you choose to go to oral argument, you have to make some decisions. You have to assign each party time, and you have to decide the order of presentation, the date of the hearing, the time of the hearing, and duration. If you choose to do that, I have some recommendations for you.
Okay, thank you. I have council members who would like to speak on this item. Councilmember Florine?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Well, we traditionally have always granted a request for oral argument regardless of the party, so I would move that we grant the request for oral argument. And what would your terms and conditions be, Mr. Zients?
I would set the date, I would, the council should set the date for October eighteenth, time ten-twenty. I would recommend that you give twenty minutes aside for argument, and that the applicant who requested oral argument go first in the presentation.
Well, that would be my motion then.
Thank you. So we have a motion to request oral argument. Does that motion need a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Council Vice President Berliner, and Councilmember Berliner, you're next.
Just to reinforce what my colleague said with respect to, I almost always vote in favor of oral argument because I think it gives this body an opportunity to understand the issues in much more depth. It is without prejudice to either side in terms of the merits here. It is a question of whether or not we feel like we can gain something by virtue of hearing from the parties directly as they frame the issues. And I, for one, feel that we benefit from that exchange in terms of our own decision-making process, and that's why I am supporting oral argument here.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Berliner. So we have a motion on the table. The motion is to request oral arguments in regard to Local Map Amendment G-892. So that is a majority vote. So all those in favor of this motion to request oral argument, please signify by raising your hands, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And so we will be scheduling this, Madam Clerk, on October eighteenth. Thank you very much. Item number six, Action, Zoning Text Amendment, eleven-zero-one, Commercial Residential CR Zones. And so this is the final vote. Councilmember Florine?
Well, yeah, so we, Mr. Zients has a memo for us that identifies a few loose issues. Actually, it responds to some issues raised by the Kensington Heights community that I think will help us as we work through our master plan. That's some of this. There's some other items, and I have a couple of additional editorial and or clarification points to bring to the council's attention. So perhaps, Mr. Zients, do you want to go through what's in your memo, and then I'll go through the other items?
Certainly. I tried to confine what I put into the memo to those topics that were due to the council as opposed to bringing ones that I thought you had talked about already. The council had determined to change the neighborhood services' public benefit. Currently, you would get public benefit points for locating a development where there were ten existing businesses, retail businesses around you. You change that to locating where there weren't ten, but you provided additional retail service to bring it to ten. Once you did that, prior sketch plan applicants, and with sketch plan approval, said, wait a second, we had that as a public benefit, and you're affecting that prior approval. I do have to note that the people who brought that to my attention had a hundred and forty points that were in their application. They would have had ten less with this, and that could have been resolved. There is one application, however, that has a hundred and two points or something that if you in fact wanted to hold them harmless, you would need to do some type of grandfathering. I proposed a paragraph on page two as a substitute to what's in your draft resolution. It would provide for sketch plans that have not yet been filed even. It would provide for sketch plans that people are working on or in process up to January first, 2012. That is an option for you. You could just confine this to existing approved sketch plans if you want. The other point that was raised by the Chair of the Planning Board was that, as it's written, it says this would apply for any of those applicants' subsequent site plan approvals. And of course, the applicants might have site plan approvals not related to the sketch plan approvals in a different location. So the Chair suggests saying that for any subsequent site plans related to the sketch plan approvals, at least ten points, so that the two things are related.
This is designed primarily to address some of the White Flint plans that everyone had always agreed would be held harmless, basically by the changes, right? Is that correct?
That is, yeah, that is the idea. Personally, I would limit it to the three that have already been approved, but it is certainly the council's option to either limit it to the three that have been approved or to any that...
Once you did that, prior sketch plan applicants and with sketch plan approval said, wait a second, we had that as a public benefit and you're affecting that prior approval. I do have to note that the people who brought that to my attention had 140 points that, that were in their application. They would have had 10 less with this, and that could have been resolved. There is one application, however, that has 102 points or something that if you in fact wanted to hold them harmless, you would, you would need to do some type of grandfathering. I proposed a paragraph on page two as a substitute to what's, what's in your draft resolution. It would, it would provide for sketch plans that have not yet been filed even. It would provide for sketch plans that people are working on or in process up to January 1st, 2012. That is an option for you. You could just confine this to, to sketch, to existing approved sketch plans if you want. The other point that was raised by the Chair, Chair of the Planning Board was that as it's written, it says this would apply for any of those applicant subsequent site plan approvals. And of course, the applicants might have site plan approvals not related to the sketch plan approvals in a different location. So the Chair suggests, saying that for any subsequent site plans related to the sketch plan approvals, at least 10 points so that the two things are related.
This is designed primarily to address some of the White Flint plans that everyone had always agreed would be held harmless, basically by the changes, right? Is that correct?
That is, yeah, that is the idea. Personally, I would limit it to the three that have already been approved. But it is certainly the council's option to either limit it to the three that have been approved or to any that, I guess, that are filed, as Mr. Science suggested before January 1st. You know, that would allow any developers who have been working on an application with the expectation that they could use that provision, they would still be allowed to use that provision.
So this is a status quo issue for this first item? Grandfathered. We've got Councilmember Elrich.
We have Councilmember Elrich next.
I'd like to support the Planning Chair's recommendation that it applied to the, only to the three plans that already have gone through sketch plan and hold them harmless, but not extend anything else.
I'll second that. And I believe the words, Madam Chair, that are, would need to be stricken are the words of those applicants which I believe are on the fifth line of this document in front of us, on page two, in that paragraph under Neighborhood Services. So instead of reading "and for any of those applicant subsequent site approvals," it's "for any subsequent site plan approvals." Is that correct?
I guess I would put the word "related" in there somewhere.
Related.
For any subsequent related site plan approvals.
So for the three that have been submitted, we're not changing the rules of the game, but for any future site plan approvals, that would be subject to the new rules.
Exactly.
And the other thing, what Councilmember Berliner suggested would be not to have for applications filed before January 1st, but to, to have them filed before today's date.
That would be approved before.
Approved, I'm sorry, approved before today's date. So were you okay?
Okay, so that would be the corrected language, everyone?
I don't know the consequence of "filed before and approved." So are we adding?
It's either one or the other. It's either, if you say "approved before today's date," then you're only giving this provision, making this provision applicable to the three sketch plans that we approved last winter. If you make it "filed before," then there may be others that get filed between now and the end of the year, or maybe we have some pending? We have some pending that have not gotten to the Planning Board yet that might have used this provision.
So I'm comfortable with "approved" in that context?
Yes.
Councilmember, did you want to speak to that smart? Councilmember Andrews?
I support that amendment as well.
So it's approved before today's date?
Well, if we just simply said "applications approved before January 1st," does that take care of it?
There may be somebody who comes in before the Planning Board, who now is the end of the year.
Okay, so before today.
Councilmember Leventhal has been waiting.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'd just like to understand from Mr. Science, when we were proposing, when the majority of the Fed Committee was proposing significant changes to the schedule of benefits in the CR zone, we had a provision that said that none of those changes would apply with respect to the White Flint Sector Plan or the Great Seneca Science Corridor Plan. The shorter list of benefits that was reported out of the Fed Committee was replaced by a longer list of benefits that Ms. Florine offered a week ago. Does that, but that's still a different list than the CR zone that the council adopted in 2010. So does the list, as approved by the council, as proposed by Chair Florine, does that apply in White Flint and Great Seneca Science Corridor?
Yes, it does, because it adds to your options. It doesn't take any way. It added some potential benefits for going to NPDUs. It did not hurt in any way existing approvals.
So the only thing that the full council did that in any way reduced the list of possible benefits was this issue of neighborhood services.
That's correct.
And so the effect of the motion made by Mr. Elrich and supported by Mr. Andrews and Mr. Berliner is to, is to apply that slightly restricted benefit to everyone going forward except for those sketch plans that have already been approved. And so I'm going to have confidence, since Mr. Berliner represents the area and has been known to be enthusiastic about the benefits that will come to Montgomery County from the investment in White Flint, which all of us are, but Mr. Berliner has particularly been, that because of his support for this amendment, he does not believe it is significantly adverse to investors in White Flint. Thank you.
So I guess we should have a vote on this, then, as amended. So that would correct, basically, one, two, three, four, fifth line down, would be corrected to say applicant, applications approved before October 11th, 2011, and for any of those applicant subsequent related site plan approvals. Is that correct? Everybody said okay to that? So perhaps a show of hand would be in order. All in favor? Unanimous. Great. The next one is, is, the next two really are based on conversations with the community with respect to some very site-specific concerns that I think have been some of the source of anxiety about what the council was doing with these neighborhood zones. So, Mr. Science, you want to go through these?
Sure. There's a table in, in the, in the draft CTA that, that sets what is the maximum ranges for total density, total FAR, the maximum for commercial, the maximum for residential, and the maximum height. And, and those maximums on that first line of the table are higher in some instances, for sure, than CT zoning, which this might be applied to. And, and the issue was, shouldn't the council have the flexibility to apply lower zones when it thought that was appropriate? Now, you're lowering this zone means, does not mean that you have to apply the lowest zone, just like you don't have to apply the maximum zones, but it would give you an option in the master plan. So as proposed, it would lower the maximum total FAR to 2.5 to 1.5. This is for the CRN zone only. So it would go to...
Different from what's in the chart in the packet?
Well, what's in the chart in the packet is a copy of the table.
Okay.
That's in the back.
Okay.
That's in the draft. So, so it would go, for CRN, it would go 0.25 to 1.5. It would go for CR, FAR, it would go zero.
Mr. Science, if you would, for those of us trying to follow you very carefully, so where it says 0.5, which is what we have in the bill before us, the proposal would be to reduce 0.5 to 0.25. That's the change in there.
Correct.
Okay, so we're lowering the, giving ourselves the option of lowering it should we choose to.
Correct. The next box to the right, instead of 0.25, as, as the lower maximum would be a zero to 2.5. And this is the slightly controversial portion of this. It would allow you to either have a purely commercial or residential zone. And the third box over on height would be lowered to 25 feet. There are, in fact, some CT zonings that, that have a 25-feet lower maximum, although in residential zones, the maximum height can be just 30 feet.
And the thinking here really is that there are some situations where there are community covenants, where people work things out and everything is copacetic, and there's no need to disturb that relationship. There, not too many, but there are cases where that's really important, and we wanted to, it made sense to preserve the council's ability to respect that as it worked through the master plans.
The covenants are a required element when you file a schematic development plan to apply CT zoning. And in those instances, when the council approved very restrictive schematic development plans, it approved those covenants that would be, that would go away when you rezoned the property. So in order to replace that, you need the flexibility to, to go as low as the covenants.
Councilmember Berliner?
I'm generally very supportive of Councilmember Florine's approach to this. I do think communities that have lived next to CT zones are now facing something very different, and I understand their concerns. Question I have is to that, quote, "controversial piece with respect to this." And I think it's important that my colleagues and I engage in this conversation because to go to zero in that second column, as I appreciate, effectively eviscerates the whole point of the CR zone, which is to have mixed use. If we go to zero, we are allowing just purely commercial or purely residential and not mixed use. So I need to understand why that is desirable or not, but it seems to me that that's one of the, I think the first change and the third change are very understandable and appropriate. But this piece, I think, deserves a little more conversation than we've had to date as to why that's justified. So I look to our Planning Board Chair to comment on it and to, are there other ways to address the concerns of neighborhoods with respect to this? Or your thoughts with respect to this?
Well, I, I have to say that it's a, it's a tricky issue. We do have properties that were zoned CT. They, they go through a local map amendment process, and that involves discussions with community members, and, and conditions are set, and covenants are established based on those binding elements of the rezoning.
What are CT zones? I apologize. And how prevalent are they?
Oh, I, well, here and there is probably a good way to describe it. It is not a widely-used zone because you can only get it through a local map amendment, which is a long, expensive process. They were designed to be commercial zones that were in transitional locations, right next to somebody's house, or right backing up to somebody's backyard, or across the street from residential.
So the whole point was that they were special zones that did have special protections for the residential neighborhoods?
Exactly.
That they are now saying, you have to give us that same level of protection now, which is understandable. Okay? Thank you.
And the way the grandfathering language in the back of the bill that's before you, or the ZTA that's before you, addresses this is to say that if you have, if you received approval for a schematic development plan, you may proceed under that development plan, keep all of your restrictions, keep, you know, and keep whatever benefits you got from that, because it will be different from the CR zone. You will not have the same requirements as the CR zone. Or you may proceed under the CR zone. So I guess folks in some communities are concerned that an applicant may choose to go under the CR zone. And then they would not be bound by what the council had relied upon in allowing that property to be used for commercial purposes. So, you know, I understand that concern. I, changing the, the bottom end of the maximums that the council can set for the C or the R to zero, to me is, raises another risk that in, in future master plans, the council will be subject to pressure from property owners who don't have CT zoning, don't have covenants, but who would prefer to do just commercial or just residential because that suits their business plan. And so, you know, the planning staff and the planning board in the first instance and the council, at the end of the process, will then have to decide how to address property owners who say, you can make it zero, and I want, I want a zero C, and I want all my FAR in R. It's just a, it's a level of complication that we had hoped to avoid by setting the minimum at 0.25 so that there had to be some level of mixed use, even in a CRN, as opposed to CRT or CR. So there is, you know, it, this would solve a problem and create a risk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Berliner. Councilmember Reamer?
Thank you. I want to, is it also true that this would effectively allow some properties in the CT zone to revert to residential?
It would depend how you apply the specific zone. If you left it with a maximum total FAR of 0.25, and then you had a maximum total, a maximum residential FAR always of 0.25, and a maximum commercial of 0.25, which gives them the choice to go either way, that exactly what you're doing, it would give them the choice either way. But if you zoned it, a point, a C, 0.25, R, 0.25, commercial, zero, then, then you would, then you could only get residential.
Because it seems to me that there are some properties that might have been zoned CT at some point in the past where they might have just been better off remaining as a residential property. And this would allow us to do that without?
This, this would allow you...
Through this technique, without changing it to a strictly residential zone.
Even if you went to, to zero, it would still allow you to always put 0.25, 0.25 for both.
Okay.
I, I support the change, and I frankly think it's, there's no harm in having some buildings that are all residential or all commercial. And I don't, even though whether it's feasible, particularly on small lots, to have buildings that are mixed residential and commercial. And so I don't see any problem with this resolution. The council has the ability, particularly on larger lots, to approach those properties differently, but we may want to, on the smaller lots, have additional flexibility. And I think this gives us a reasonable amount of flexibility, and nobody will be harmed if somebody builds a residential or commercial building.
Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you. It seems to me the goal of the zone is to have, you know, high-quality mixed use in the zone. I don't think that equates to having the mixed use in every single building in the zone. So I do think you can achieve the, the goal of the zone, which is high-quality mixed-use development near transit, without having every single building that comes through be mixed use. Because I think there may be occasions where that's not the best outcome, based on what's there already or the particular project that's proposed, and what's next to it, or would be going next to it in the pipeline or that's already there. So I think that the change gives flexibility without undermining the essential purpose of the zone.
It would be of more concern if it were going to apply to the CT and the CR as well, I think.
Actually, in White Flint, we have examples, for example, of 3.5. Sorry, we have examples in White Flint where it's 3.5, 3.5, 3.5, and we work that out as a sketch plan comes in, because somebody, buildings, say, up in the northwest corner facing a residential area will be different, perhaps, than the part of the zone that's more central to the, to the development.
Remember, we're only talking about the CRN zone here, and I think the risk they're talking about is us, that we might do something that they don't like. I mean, that's not their, that's not, really not our problem. But I would point out, one of the challenges, the reason it went to zero was because the commitment here is to try to do in increments of 0.25. So there's a lot of room between 0 and 1.5, and that just simply allows the council to make a choice based on unique community conditions. It could be 0.10 or something, something less than 2.5. That was the challenge of all this. Not so much that it would be all residential, but it would be a lower than currently where you, where you, the council could exercise its discretion at this point. And you'll see that when we do the, particularly the Wheaton Plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Florine. Councilmember Leventhal?
I'd like to, first of all, I'm going to support this. I think it seems reasonable. And I think the major point is that it preserves the council's ability to adopt master plans in the council's judgment that reflect the council's vision of what communities, we don't even know which communities in the future we will be planning for, might look like. Which leads me to my question, because I just flipped through the 55 circle pages of zoning text amendment number 1101, and I, I'm pretty sure it's in here, but I, I'd like Jeff Science to direct me to the provision that says that the new zones only apply where they are provided in a master plan. Where is that? What lines is? Could, could we find that? You can come back if you want to. But I, I do want to emphasize that that's in there, because this speaks directly to the issue that still I think a lot of community members are confused about. And we had this discussion last week, but I think it's important to, to restate. The council is reserving its right to use master plans to describe in a legal document what specific communities look like. This CR zone...
Line 89, Circle 8.
Line 89, Circle 8, okay? Thank you, whoever found that. So line 89, Circle 8, says that the CRN, CRT, and CR zones can only be applied when specifically recommended by an approved and adopted master or sector plan, and only by the sectional map amendment process. So this... So this amendment is consistent with our -- the county council, the district council, preserving our ability to use master plans to define the vision of what committees -- communities will look like with community input, and this CR zone does not displace or override or take priority over what is contained in master plans. And so this question as to whether it -- whether the specific density might be higher or lower or as low as 0.25, or whether a specific neighborhood might be all residential, or a specific parcel might be only residential and not mixed use. When we adopt this CR zone, we are embracing the idea of more mixed use. I embrace that myself, and the council will embrace that. But as Mr. Elrich said, there will be parcels where you're not defying the concept of more mixed use, more transit-oriented development, by saying, "Well, this partial might -- parcel might only be commercial," or "It might only be residential," depending on what works for that site in that master plan. And I just want to restate that again, because we're still getting correspondence that suggests that the anxieties which are being evoked in the community about this CR zone, it has not been made clear to people that the zone that we are likely to adopt this morning does contain these lines, 89 through 91, that say these zones can only be applied -- I'm sorry, I'm reading it a second time, bear with me -- when specifically recommended by an approved and adopted master or sector plan, and only by the sectional map amendment process.
Thank you, Councilmember Leventhal. Councilmember Berliner.
I am grateful that we've had this exchange with respect to this particular provision and the amendment, and I will be supporting it as well. And I would say to my planning board chair, who I have the greatest respect for, that I listen carefully to your argumentation, but when you suggest that the greatest risk is ourselves, you lose me. So I do believe that one of the great privileges of being on this council is our land use authority, and that we try very hard to listen to our community. We will listen to you when you come forward with your master plan recommendations, and we will listen to our community, and we will do our job. And that is to balance the larger with the small, and this gives us the flexibility to do that, and so I will support it and commend my colleague for bringing it to our attention.
I'm actually very comfortable with this. I just wanted to give you both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Berliner. I'm going to turn this back over to the chair.
Thank you. I'm not sure if there was a motion on this. Was there a motion?
There's a motion to adopt this amendment.
Okay. Was there a motion?
I don't recall there was a motion.
Councilmember Elrich has moved it, and Councilmember Leventhal has seconded it, all in favor of making this change. Great, it's unanimous. The next item is a similar sort of adjustment, which basically would address the extent to which a site plan would be required in the CRN zones.
Correct.
Again, same issue, neighborhood concerns, what's too much, where's our role, that sort of thing. And this would clarify that in the CRN zones, if there is an addition to an existing property or the tot -- if there's an addition that takes the total square footage, gross floor area of the proposal up to 10,000, including what's there, they would have to go through site plan. It's a little more liberal for the CRT and CR zones, and there are other terms as well that still would govern site plan. But that's what's described on page three of Mr. Zients's packet. Right? Mr. Ziant -- did I get that right?
You did get that correct. The planning board chair had suggested change that we're trying to locate.
I don't have that email.
I guess we don't have it.
We simply need to make sure that this doesn't conflict with the grandfathering provisions that allow 10,000 square feet, or allow a certain amount of square footage to be grandfathered without a site plan review. So we need to clarify this language.
The grandfathering provisions, which are the last provisions in the sectional code, can always override if they apply. If you have an approved sketch plan, if you have an approved development plan, if you 've gone through the process in some way, you can continue going through the process. You can also add 10% up to 30,000 square feet, or 10% or 30,000 square feet, whichever is less, without triggering all of the CR provisions. I don't know that we have to write something specific here, and I don't know if --
What my thought was that there were really two concepts here. One was to get -- make sure we have site plan for anything that is 10,000 square feet or more, and the other was to get -- make sure we have site plan for something that adds 10,000 square feet, either of which could have enough impacts on a neighbor that we would want it to have some kind of review. So I had suggested adding a little bit of language to what the residents suggested, which you see on page three of your packet. So it would go at the end of the first clause before the semicolon. So it would read, "In CRN zones includes a gross floor area exceeding 10,000 square feet, or unless covered by Section 59C --" the grandfathering one at the end.
Okay.
59C, 15.9A, includes a square footage -- includes a gross floor area, 10,000 square feet more than the floor area on the site when the CRN, CRT, or CR zone was applied." So it sort of combines what was already in the draft with what the residents suggested. Yep.
It is in my email. So the idea was to separate out simply the CRN zones.
Correct.
I think your language does more than that.
My -- what my language is intended to do is to provide -- is to require a site plan for, you know, in my mind, it doesn't have to be different for CRN. I would probably apply it to all three zones. The residents only requested it for the CRN zone, but it's intended to provide for a site plan in two circumstances. One, if your site -- if your request for approval includes a gross floor area of 10,000 square feet, period, or if you're -- if you want to add 10,000 square feet or more, unless you're covered by the grandfathering provisions, in which case you don't have to follow any of the CR rules for that development.
And the adding -- the added provision is already covered in the provision for CRT and CRN. 10,000 square feet or gross floor more than the area from when it was applied.
Well, if we're just being lawyerly and alluding to another relevant provision, which I think you're adding in the grandfathering stuff to make sure that -- make it clear that we worried about this, I think that's what you're saying.
It's a little more than that, because the way the bill -- the way the bill has been -- the ZTA has been presented to you, it would require a site plan if you added 10,000 square feet, but not if you had nothing on the site and just built something that was over 10,000 square feet. That would not trigger site plan.
Well, that was the intent of the first line of number two in the CRN zones, included gross floor area exceeding 10,000 square feet. So if, no matter how you got above 10,000 square feet, you would trigger it.
In the language that is currently under C2?
No, that's proposed in C2.
Right, right. And that was what -- so the residents were trying. We had -- originally, we had written it so that it would just say 10,000 square feet, and then it was amended to say 10,000 square feet more than what's there, and some folks wanted to bring back in the concept that was originally in it, which we had thought about, but it was so complex.
Mrs. Zients, just so we know what we're talking about, Mrs. Zients, would you agree with that? That language would work?
I agree it would work. It does call back into the grandfathering provision directly, but what I didn't understand, were you applying it to both CRN and the other zones or not? You don't -- you could apply it to all zones.
I don't see any reason not to.
Right.
So we have some additional language from the planning board chair that would clarify that. Okay.
Councilmember Reimer.
This may be an non-issue, but does this mean that if you had a property that was 10,000 square feet and you wanted to add one room to it? Maybe that doesn't ever happen, I don't know, but then you would have to go through site plan?
Only if it's a really big room.
Another 10,000 square feet?
Right. If you're adding less than 10,000 square feet, you don't have to go to site plan.
But that is, in fact, inconsistent with if the total is more than 10,000 square feet, you have to go to site plan.
That's what I was getting at.
Oh, I see.
Because one square foot, if I have 10,000, if the 9,999 building could build two square feet, and it would trigger site plan. If I'm over 10,000, I always have site plan, so.
It is, you know, there is a danger of being a little over-inclusive or a little under-inclusive, and I guess --
And I'm not sure if that's a problem. I don't know if that ever happens, I don't know. I'm just saying that this is a possibility, that any property over 10,000 would have to go through site plan for any change in its size, even if it was a very small change.
Well, if it would be included, it would be covered by the grandfathering if it's an existing building. So an existing building can add up to 10% of its existing square footage, or a maximum of 30,000 square feet. So unless it's a really big building, they can add, I mean, even a really big building can add up to 10%. So if you're making a very small addition, that's exempted under the grandfathering provisions.
Jeff? I think so, yes, because of the grandfathering provision kicks in, which does mean that you'll never get to the situation where you get a -- have a 6,000 square foot on the site, you add 5,000 square feet, it wouldn't trigger it, because the grandfathering provision would say you can get 10 -- you can get 10%. No, it would trigger it. It's okay. I'm okay. It took me a while, I'm sorry.
Welcome to the Fed Committee.
It was very, you know, the math gets to. I would -- I think it's a sound provision to go as the planning director.
Okay, I have a question here. Councilmember Berliner, followed by Councilmember Elrich.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure, understand this sometimes a little slow. So the original proposal was if there was, if you will, a freestanding building of 10,000 square feet or more that had not existed previously, we want site plan approval. That had been the original suggestion. And now the suggestion from our planning board chair is to say, in addition to that protection, if somebody is -- already has a building there but is adding 10,000 square feet, we want to protect that as well. So she's adding to the protections that the neighbors have sought with respect to this. Is that a fair characterization?
That's fair.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to be clear on what I'm not clear on right now, is the real protection is against somebody coming in and doing a building under 10,000 square feet where they could do more, and then coming in and wanting to do another 10,000 square feet. And what that takes out of play is piecemealing a project where you can't get above the 10,000 feet by doing two different deals.
That's covered.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we've got some clarifying language from the chair that we will ask the chair to transmit in a fashion to Mr. Zients, but I think we've explored the implications of that. So do we have a motion for this? I'll move approval of this. And that's been -- motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your hands. That's unanimous. And then we have a -- I have just circulated to you a couple of other things that I think are worth talking about. One is one that's been raised by a property owner, and two are really Mr. Zients's issues. He didn't have time to put it in his memo. The first one, the best way I can describe this is, right now, there are requirements for setbacks and uses and heights that apply to properties adjacent to -- was it residential and agriculture?
It was average density, land uses, and setbacks.
That apply to land that's adjacent to or confronting agricultural or residential zones, right? And this, the point of this language is to point -- to release those restrictions and situations where we have anomalous situations. Think of the water tower. That's the best example I can think of as a visual issue. Things like that are routinely located in ag land and residentially zoned land, but they're really not a -- you know, they're not a problem, but they're not the community issue that you want to protect against so much. You can make that judgment call, but routinely, I think, in the current zones, that typically is a reason for not having some of the setback and other requirements when you're adjacent to things of that nature that have evolved historically in land that technically doesn't -- you would never expect to see these things in. That's the example, the visual, that I could bring to mind as I drove in this morning. There are others of that nature, major utility stations and the like, that have transformed that land not into the pure residential use or agricultural use that one might have assumed. So if we added this land language here, that would -- that would respect those situations. And I'll call the -- ask the chair of the planning board if the planning board has any problems with this.
I would say the planning director and I are very comfortable with this language.
So I would move that provision adjustment. So all in favor of that? You raise your hand. That's unanimous? Great. And then, Councilmember -- Councilmember -- I want to -- Mr. Zients, if you could explain this next one. As the committee worked through the public benefits, we made some adjustments, there were some editorial changes, and we ended up with a certain regrettable inconsistency in terminology. We had "up to," "shall not exceed," and things like that, and I just don't think, because of our commitment to working through the details, we saw the language changes that we had created in an inconsistent fashion. So Mr. Zients' concern, I'll let him speak to it really, is that we should have -- we should have an upper limit?
Yes.
On the planning board's discretion in some of these, and we mostly do in these categories, but not all. And so Mr. Zients proposed some tweaking to the language and to some of the point numbers to respect the planning board's discretion, but to remember that the council is in charge. And Mr. Zients, you want to clarify that further?
It is a -- it could be a trap to have a situation where you so delegate authorities to the planning board that a court will determine that you were beyond your authority to do that delegation. In this particular instance, you have most things with an upper bound. Most things say up to an existing point number. There are 14 of these benefits that have an at-least number with no upper bound, and I think you are much safer having that upper bound in all cases.
So that's the -- I think this is Councilmember Elrich's issue. We talked about that a fair amount, but not -- no, I'll know, but, you know, you raised it periodically, and we just never circled around to fix that part. So that's doing this. So Councilmember Elrich, did you want to move this?
Yes.
And I'll second it. All in favor? Unanimous? And then we have a few little cleanup things at the end.
I just listed.
Mr. Zients did not want to insert his own legislative judgment in some of the language for some reason.
I have been bringing to attention, to the council's attention, where I've been making changes even on an editorial basis in this zone, and there are a couple more of them. And they're listed at the bottom of the page. None of these change the substance of the zone or any substantive matter.
So with that, I guess I'd ask for a vote on the amended version of the CR.
Chair, I just have one clarifying question, if I could, not for these amendments more broadly, because the community -- broadly, because the community members have come to me and asked me to pose this question. So, I do so for our community that is, continues to be concerned with respect to your ability, Madam Chair, to ensure that the public amenities and benefits that are in master plans are, in fact, achieved, and that you have the discretion in how you award your points to make sure that those things that are in our master plans are, in fact, realized. So, the question really is to you to respond to that angst in our community that, with respect to your ability, when these people come before you and propose certain amenities, for you to insist that some of the public benefits that have been promised in master plans are, in fact, realized.
When we get an application that involves land, that where the master plan has recommended a public facility in that quadrant of a master plan or on that property, we have the authority to push an applicant to provide that facility or provide the land. You know, sometimes they provide the land. Sometimes they might actually provide part of a building, depending on what makes sense. But we have that authority, and we fully intend to use it when the occasion comes to us, which we hope will come soon.
And it might have been lost in the 56 pages of this, but within the opinion is a provision that says, "The council is also satisfied that ZTA 1101 includes provisions to allow the planning board to disapprove of a project if the package of public benefits is not sufficiently conform to the master plan and public needs created by the development." The planning board chair agreed that the ZTA will administer using that discretion.
Thank you both for your clarification.
Councilmember Leventhal?
Are we now debating the passage of ZTA 1101? We're speaking to...
Right. We were about to call the motion.
Right, okay. So, I just want to very, very briefly talk about what I think this is and what I think it is not. What I think it is, is a good effort to change the thinking in our commercial areas so that we do indeed combine living units with working and shopping units. And that's a needed change. And I think, more than anything else, it's important that we identify that, that that's our new vision, that we're changing the way that we zone parts of Montgomery County, moving away from a post-World War II framework where the houses were way over here, and the industry was way over there, and shopping was way over somewhere else, because that was the vision in the post-World War II automobile age of what created a nice suburban community. And we know that times have changed, and that if our goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled, we have to have mixed uses. And so, more than anything else, that's what I think this zone accomplishes. And I think that's what it is. I think, in terms of the benefits, I think there will be nicer-looking buildings. I think there will be important extractions from developers. I think there will be attractive public spaces. And I think that's all to the good. I think what it is not is, I think it is not simple. I think it is not as clear and transparent a delegation in law what the benefits will be, rather than a delegation to the planning board. It's very clear, even in the answer just now to Mr. Berliner's question, that the planning board retains substantial authority to negotiate proffers from developers under this zone. So, some of the things that this new zone has been billed as, I think it really is not. It does not represent simplification, and it does not represent a dramatic improvement in terms of the community knowing what it will get, because it's very clear, as the planning board chair said, that if a master plan calls for something of all of the potential benefits that a developer could get, the planning board will insist on the benefits that the planning board thinks and that the master plan dictates ought to be there. So, it still retains substantial authority to the planning board, and there still will be substantial room for negotiation with developers over proffers. I spent a lot of time reading this zone and participating in the dialogue over the last several months in the Fed Committee, and the majority of the Fed Committee recommended a shorter list of benefits that would provide more oomph behind affordable housing in particular, and I think also for building law terminations. And I've already addressed, last week when we had that debate over Chair Florine's amendment, why I thought that was appropriate. It was not in any way an effort to harm the investment climate. It was not in any way an effort to gut this zone. And it does, and that effort did not, I think, gut the goal of mixed-use, transit-oriented development. I think that the shorter list of benefits would still have furthered those goals, but it was the will of the council to go back to a longer list of benefits. And more than anything else, I'm pleased that the committee clarified two valuable points above the ZTA that was initially introduced. We substantially increased the points available for affordable housing, and we clarified that no benefits will be provided for requirements otherwise existing in law. And so, with those two protections, I am comfortable voting for this zone. I know that there's a belief, and I've already addressed it, that somehow this zone is going to override master plans. Somehow, this zone will encroach upon other zones where the council hasn't applied them, and somehow all kinds of neighborhoods are going to change, particularly residential neighborhoods. And I hear from my constituents, and I want to understand the reasons for their anxiety, but I think most of those anxieties, with great respect, are misplaced. I don't believe this zone will have that effect. And I think that, as I said just a few moments ago, this council retains our responsibility to adopt master plans, and that the fundamental vision of what communities ought to look like is enshrined in those documents, not in the zone. And we haven't even decided whether we will apply this zone in some of the master plans which have come to us from the planning board suggesting this zone. I have been a little bit concerned about the extraordinary extent to which, in a discussion of a zone, which is supposed to be an overarching framework, we've gotten dragged into the details of specific parcels and specific provisions in master plans. But that just comes with the territory. I mean, there's a lot of property interests at stake, and a lot of money at stake, and so, you just have to live with that as a legislator. But I do think that the specific debates over the specific heights of specific buildings and the specific look of specific intersections ought to take place more in master plan discussions, rather in discussions around the zone. So, I particularly want to thank my friend, Mr. Elrich. He's brought out some very interesting and important questions, and I do think that it is valuable to consider where we are expending the benefits that developers will get, and whether we are going to get the maximum amount of community benefit that we might get. And that's ultimately not an answerable question. I mean, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. And it'll depend on the marketplace. When times are good, the potential for profit is greater, and the proffers will be more generous. And when times are bad, our eagerness to foster investment will be greater, and that might mitigate against a larger amount of benefits from developers. But I do think that the dialogue we had in the Fed Committee was valuable. I learned a lot, but although the position that I advocated in committee was overturned by this council in its vote last week on the Florine amendment, I'm not, I'm not feeling the need to protest. I'm comfortable enough with the vision of a mixed-use, revitalized, commercial residential area within the county that I will vote for this zone, although I think that the points that we made in committee, the necessity of emphasizing affordable housing, the necessity of highlighting our policy priorities, I think those points were adequately made, and I'm glad to have been able to participate in the dialogue.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Leventhal. Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you. I want to thank all of the people that worked so hard on this, from the planning board to the community representatives, to the Fed Committee especially, that wrestled with this over many meetings. I do think that the bill, the zoning tax amendment that's before us now, is better than it started, and significantly better. And I do think it will advance the important goal of fostering high-quality mixed-use development near transit while providing appropriate protections for transitions to existing neighborhoods. I think the key to doing that is the provision. That's in the zoning tax amendment that ties the applicability of the zone to specific approval designation master plans. I think that is crucial, and I believe that will allow the county council to make the appropriate judgments in terms of where it should be applied on a, on a master plan by master plan basis. I do think that the recommendation by the Fed Committee that was rejected last week would have been a better way to go in terms of what kinds of benefits are available. I do think the longer the list, the less likely you're going to get the public facilities or more affordable housing. But I agree that, overall, this advances an important county goal, and so, I'm going to support the zoning tax amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Elrich?
I have a few things I want to say about this. First of all, this was never a debate about smart growth or TOD. I thought that argument about the future of Montgomery County and the creation of mixed-use zones was settled when we did the twin broke plan and with the introduction of new zones that were designed to give us the flexibility to create that. So, I don't view these zones as fundamentally breaking new ground or representing a break with a decision that had already been made by Montgomery County in how it wanted to approach development, particularly around transit areas. And I appreciate some of the changes that the council's made to provide a little bit more protection around the fringes of these areas. I think that, I think Norman Dreyfus made a wise comment to us when we interviewed him for reappointment, and he said something to the effect that you shouldn't fuss over things that have minimal impact and reserve your fights for the big things. And I think the marginal gains or the marginal density increases around the edges were outweighed, are outweighed by the concerns of the community around the edges. And I think, you know, the council's taken some steps to address that. I'm still not happy with the process or, instead of process, but with the outcome of this process. To me, it's really a fundamental issue of how we do the planning and how we ensure, not just density, but how we ensure place-making. And the lessons I've gotten from, from reading the literature out there and seeing what other jurisdictions' experiences are, is that your list of amenities needs to be short, it needs to be direct, it needs to be focused on those things that you want. And those things that you expect the community to look like need to be required in master plans or design guidelines, whatever different jurisdictions call their, their overall plans for an area. And that is, I think, the danger in adopting this very, very, very long laundry list of ways of getting points. Some of the things in that list are things that belong to master plans. Some of the things in that list are things that are just essential to creating the places we tell people that we're trying to create, and should not be options that a developer can choose from. I was surprised last week to learn that apparently, by not mentioning affordable housing when we were doing the master plan for White Flint, that somehow that wasn't a priority. And frankly, I thought that the county-wide housing element, which I theoretically applied county-wide, said that this was a priority. And so, I didn't realize we had to say in White Flint that this is a priority, and you need to go get it. So, I regret that oversight on the part of the council. If I had known a year ago or two years ago that we needed to say affordable housing belongs in White Flint, I would have put that in there in a heartbeat. I thought we were covered on that. I'm also concerned that there's no nexus to the density given in exchange for the benefits received. And that, to me, is one of the greatest weaknesses. It's what makes it so tempting and so easy for developers to pick the low-hanging fruit, if they want to pick the low-hanging fruit, and then get into the debates with the planning board over whether this is acceptable or not acceptable. And that is, that is a possibility when you have a system that is not based on equivalency in terms of what you pay for what you get. When you read the lessons from around the country of people who've tried to implement these systems, this is what they tell you to avoid. You need to have certainty. And we don't have the certainty, I think, that we need. Finally, I was intrigued by looking across the river, because a lot of us are looking across the river. And there was a time when we used to characterize Virginia as the equivalent of the zoning Wild West, that anything went, and you could do anything you wanted, and they were so much more friendly and nicer than we were. And when I'm reading what's going on in Tyson's and looking at their plan, and realizing that they don't have the authority legally to do what we do in Montgomery County, so they don't have the lists that we have. But they have a different system. It's a proffer system. I'm not sure I'd suggest that we go to a proffer system, because it has its own set of weaknesses. But it's clear in Virginia, one of the decisions they've made is to truly concentrate development on top of the metro centers and to tent it out more aggressively than we've tented it out. And in Virginia, they've made a decision to actually get more public benefits in Tyson's Corner for the, to create the kind of place that they know Tyson's Corner is going to have to be if they succeed. And things that are optional on our list are not options for developers in Tyson's Corner. There are things that they're going to have to do to make these places happen. So, I wish we were doing that. I'm going, I'm going to vote against this, which is probably no big surprise. They will pass anyway. There are positive things about this plan. It's certainly not the worst zone we ever created. And it's certainly, it's, it's an extension, in my mind, of the work we did on the TMX zone. To me, you could have modified TMX and called it a day, if that's what our intention had been. But I think that the holes in this zone, in terms of what we get for the density that we give out, are too vast, and they should have been more constrained than they are.
Thank you, Councilmember Elrich. The next slide on is this Councilmember Berliner. Councilmember Berliner, okay. Just, I'll share just a couple reflections. I think our challenge going forward in this whole endeavor is twofold. It is to assure our wonderful residential communities that we will, in fact, protect them, that we honor them, that we value them, that they are a wonderful part of Montgomery County, and we are not about to disrupt that quality of life that people so enjoy. And I feel we have done that in this zone. The other aspect is, of course, that we have commercial strips that are from the 50s, in which we do need to enliven, in which we do need to have residential as part of our commercial areas, that will create the kind of life and the quality of life that we desire. This zone does that. So, I feel on two of the most fundamental pieces that we are confronting as a county and as a, as custodians of our land use authority, that this zone advances our interests, that protects our residential neighborhoods, not only in the ways in which we did it today, under the leadership of Chair Florine, and of the good work of our residential community of bringing issues to our attention, but also, as has been observed by our absolute statement, that this does not happen willy-nilly. This isn't going to pop up everywhere. It is going to pop up where we, as a council, make a conscious decision that it is going to be applicable through our master plans. And that will be a choice that will be debated each and every time until we make a different decision, unless we make a different decision. So, that is our stance, and that is one that I'm very, very comfortable with. And I would also say to those that are concerned about density, and I say this with the greatest respect to my colleague, we're not establishing the density here. The density will be established in the master plans, block by block, as we did in White Flint, not through the CR zone. It is parcel by parcel that we look at it, and we make sure that the density that we are allowing in a particular parcel is worthy of that density. And that, finally, I will trust that our planning board's commitment to ensuring that the benefits that are most important to our community are, in fact, achieved. And I have no reason to doubt that in this moment in time. I would say to my colleagues, many of whom I think have seen some of the sketch plans and site plans that have been proposed for White Flint. We're beginning to see some of the architectural drawings now. Federal Realty is going forward, and they have shared with us some of the architectural drawings that they are proposing. Ladies and gentlemen, they are drop-dead. They are drop-dead beautiful. They are something to be excited about. It's really going to be extraordinary what happens in that community. And that is a function of the decisions this council made, both with respect to the CR zone and the master plan itself. It is the combination of the two that allow us to ensure that our community looks and feels the way we collectively desire it. And I feel like we've handled that responsibility well, and that this exercise... well, and that this exercise has been a good one, and it's a plus for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Berliner. Councilmember Reimer?
Well, I want to associate myself with Councilmember Berliner's comments and also add that one of the advantages of this new zone is that it greatly expands the number of properties in Montgomery County that must have negotiated public benefits. And while I am certainly comfortable with delegating much of that authority to the planning board on our behalf, as guided by the master plans, I just want to say again that the planning board will be negotiating for public benefits in a great many more instances than we were allowed to do before, or they were allowed to do before. And so the result to the community will be a substantial increase in the number of public benefits provided from development in our commercial zones. And I think that is a very significant contribution to improving our quality of life here in Montgomery County.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reimer. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you. I want to express my appreciation to the Fed Committee and specifically to the Chair, Councilmember Florine, for leading so many sessions and coming finally to this moment. It seems like I was never going to get here. But I really appreciate the attention, the thought that all members paid and the time that they invested on making sure that we did whatever we could to try to get this right. You know, is it perfect? I really, I never believed that planning can be completely perfect. You're always trying to control a lot of variables. But I think that it is true that this is a cutting edge in terms of what suburban communities are facing throughout the country. And I think from Montgomery County, being part of the Washington metropolitan area, sooner or later, I think we were going to have to start addressing some of these issues with regards to mixed use and with regards to some areas that, I know it's a crazy word, but, you know, are becoming more urban. And that's okay. As long as we come together and learn and bring best practices to those areas, we're going to be fine. So I'm very pleased with the result. I will say that I do agree that perhaps, you know, the community benefits list maybe could have been shorter, but I think that this is a really good, good product. And I, this is the first time, and I'm really pleased that we're able to afford it. So thank you, everybody. You know, the planning director, the planning chair, and Mr. Zients, everybody who's worked so hard in this effort. Thank you so much, and I will be voting for it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Navarro. And this is the final word from the Chair of the Fed Committee, who has done extraordinary work on behalf of the entire council, Councilmember Florine.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to thank everybody. This has been very difficult. It's been an educational experience. It's been a community engagement experience. And everyone has really rode hard to find us to this place. It was, I mean, up until the last couple of days, I think we've made some really important community-related improvements that I think will assuage folks who've been concerned about some of the details because, you know, this is the details of Montgomery County. It's, so I do think people do need to step back for a moment and just remember what we're doing here. As we work through these master plans and ultimately, we're replacing a variety, an amalgam of inconsistent zones with mysterious requirements, all of which are pretty much resolved in a back room somewhere. Now, we have, well, there may be some, there's still going to be a certain amount of lack of clarity as to exactly what's going to be negotiated. At least we have some standards that we don't have now in any zone for the kinds of things that people can be discussing. And I think it's far clearer and transparent than what we have today. Is it perfect? Probably not. But it's also been crafted to reflect unique community needs. And that's what's led to the long list, but it's also led to, that's because of a respect for the uniqueness of our community. So I think this is a great piece of work for us all. It reflects the tremendous balancing act of Montgomery County zoning, respecting communities, respecting businesses, trying to add predictability while at the same point preserving discretion on the, at the various levels of government. And so I do thank everyone for their really complete engagement on this. And I think this will help make Montgomery County a better place.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Florine. So what we have before us is a committee recommendation as amended, so I'm going to need a motion.
And that would include all the editorial changes and straw votes that we've made so far?
Right. I said as amended. We just amended them all. So it's been moved by Councilmember Reimer, seconded by Councilmember Rice, and Madam Clerk, I believe this is a roll call vote. Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Mr. Leventhal?
Yes.
Mr. Elrich?
No.
Ms. Florine?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Navarro?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Berliner?
Yes.
Ms. Irvin? Yes. The motion carries nine to one. Eight to one. Unless we added Mr. Zients.[965.28][965.28](Laughter) Wow. We added you, Jeff. Thank you very much. Eight to one. So we're going to move on at this time to item number seven on the agenda, which is a Board of Health update from Dr. Alder Tillman, County Health Officer. So we'll give people the chance to transition. Good morning, Dr. Tillman. We seem to have lost several of my colleagues. I'm sure they'll be back. So at this time, I will turn over the microphone to you, and you can introduce who's at the table with you, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Good morning, County Council. Sitting has the Board of Health. And I am Dr. Alder Tillman, the County Health Officer. I have with me today, on my right, 50% of the staff for Healthy Montgomery, Ruth Martin, who is our Senior Health Planner in the department. The other 50%, Colleen Ryan Smith, who is the Epidemiologist, is away today to attend to some matters for her school child. And on my left, who will be following my presentation, is the Chair of the Commission on Health, Marcus Pescaris, and he will speak after. I have been striving in these last days, really, or these more recent times, of trying to present to you things that are as straightforward as possible and clear. And I know that in Health and Human Services, we do a lot with data and data analyses, and we throw up a lot of statistics. And those are very important. But I want to at least bring all of you up to date of where we are with our community health improvement process, which is important for our county for a number of reasons. But if we just go to some of the background, that the last time that this county has had a comprehensive countywide health assessment was in 2001. And that was actually related to the work of our hospitals and our Commission on Health that did that assessment and identified needs in our county. And we did some annual kind of reports, but really started drifting away from the data that was the foundation of those assessments and those priorities. When I joined the department at the end of 2003, I was very concerned that I didn't have a good grasp of what was happening with our subpopulations. I heard that Montgomery County was changing dramatically, and I wanted to get a better handle on that and not just the county profile that the state will produce annually. So we really began working slowly but surely to move in the direction of having good data on which to make our decisions. And it was in 2008 that, with the support of the Collaboration Council for Children, Youth, and Family and others, that we were able to sponsor a Public Health Systems Performance Assessment using a Centers for Disease Control tool. And through that, with a number of representatives, our hospitals and insurers, others, we really came to the consensus that, yes, Montgomery County needs a community health improvement process, which is a way of going through repeated iterations of looking at what are the needs, where are the gaps, what can we do about it, and how have we succeeded. So we had that support from them. And it was with the help of our hospitals and Kaiser Permanente that, through community benefit, that we were able to get this going. So at this point in time, there are no county funds, but we do have a county council grant that supports the work, but nothing's in the department's budget to do this. And next slide. Okay, so our goals really are to, not only to improve the access to health and social services, but to improve health outcomes for all of our residents of Montgomery County. And I'll say a bit more about that a little bit later. We also want to achieve equity in our county. You know, we do better than many of the jurisdictions in the state of Maryland and the state overall in a number of our health outcomes. But where we fall short is that we have a number of persistent disparities in our county. And I always have to ask myself, why? And yes, you can go a whole lot of academic reasons for that, but they do indeed exist. And for example, we have African-American women who have three times the level of infant deaths than their white counterparts. And there are disparities among all of our population groups. And I find it disturbing. I know it's the reality, but I keep asking myself, why must it be this way? And we ought to be able to overcome those disparities in our county. So achieving health equity for all residents, and it goes even beyond health equity, but achieving equity among our residents is an important component of Healthy Montgomery. And to enhance our physical and social environment to support optimal health and well-being. There are things and principles in public health that we always look at. What environmental controls can we change to make it easier for individuals to make healthy choices and to improve their health? So that's also a component of Healthy Montgomery. I want to say from the start that Healthy Montgomery is not just with the health sector. It includes all of Montgomery. So we have a number of stakeholders that I'll review in a minute that are at the table, and I'll point out some more that I hope will join us as we go on. I have these objectives here, and at the end, I have what I hope is going to be a more simple way of looking at it and remembering it. But we do want to identify and prioritize the health needs in the county as a whole. We want to establish, and we have established, a comprehensive set of indicators, some 100 indicators, that will touch on not just health indicators, but those what we call social determinants, whether it's something in our physical environment, in education, in housing, in education. All of that was part of an environmental scan, and so we have identified some 100 indicators to address that. Then we want to move from that to foster those projects that are going to achieve improved outcomes for our county. And that's where a lot of the work will really begin. And we're doing a lot of hard work right now with the Steering Committee. But then we've got to take what we have identified and what we've shared and decided to how do we then move Montgomery County for that transformation. And in doing that, we want to address those disparities, whether or not there are socioeconomic disparities or geographic or whatever. Those things need to be addressed. And then we do want to leverage the resources, the will of the stakeholders that we have around the table to take this to another level and to sustain the effort. Because, as I said, it should be what we call reiterative. We don't just do it once, put it on the shelf, and say we're done. We keep looking at, have we succeeded? And then what do we need to do next to make those improvements? So these are our stakeholders that we have, our Steering Committee. And I'm impressed with the Steering Committee and the work. We have some 22 members of our Steering Committee. Commission of Health is one. We have all of our hospitals at the table. We have insurers, a particular Kaiser, at the table. We've got our Department of Recreation. You can see we have a number of commission and boards at the table, including mental health and aging and disabilities. We have our County Council at the table. So that Councilmember George Leventhal represents you, and he is a co-chair. And as we are in a point of trying to do priority setting, he really is your point of contact if you have input that you would like to give, that please, share it with him so that he can share it with the Steering Committee and that we can make sure that your concerns and your input is also taken into account. We have academia representation, and I must say that I would hope that we can strengthen our educational representation in our Steering Committee because as we go forward, we will want to hear more from our public schools, our private schools, higher education and what we're doing. We obviously have healthcare providers who are interested. We have our minority health initiatives, and we have Park and Planning Commission involved, as well as our department and community and faith-based organizations. And in my recent work on the CDC Community Transformation Grant, which unfortunately we did not receive, but it brought a number of us together in that effort, and the Montgomery County Medical Society stepped up, and they became more involved, and they've joined as well. So let me say where we've been and where we're going. I mentioned that we started with an environmental scan, so we were compiling information from various sectors throughout the county. And it's not just what was in Health and Human Services. So we wanted to collect that health, social, education, labor, all of that information of what's available so we could build on that. We completed that. We've moved on and now have completed a comprehensive needs assessment. And this is not collecting new data, but it's looking at what is there and pulling it together so that we do have what we call both quantitative data, the factual data, as well as the qualitative data in terms of what we've gleaned from what we call community conversations or focus groups, that they've gave, given input in terms of what matters to them and what's important to them in health and well-being. So we have that information now compiled. And so we've completed that. And we are now moving into a hard phase and a challenging phase for our Steering Committee. And I was impressed, and I was discussing with Ruth Martin about how much material we are asking our Steering Committee to review and be prepared in terms of priority setting and a retreat. And I say that it's as thick as a telephone directory, and I guess it depends on what telephone directory you have. But I know mine is about three inches thick of reading. And that's background as well as this quantitative and qualitative assessments so that we can do the hard work of defining what the criteria would be to weight our issues and how we're going to move about actually doing priority setting. And in that work, we've already had some conference calls. We have determined that in the, I guess I should just complete that. Once we do the priority setting, as I said before, we'll be working on an action agenda and then trying to implement those improvements. And we will always need to do data system development and maintenance. But if we move into the criteria that we have But if we move into the criteria that we have done in our priority setting, the steering committee has determined that we are going to be focusing in the very near future, and they're actually doing a, what is it called, a Survey Monkey for rating some 22 issues that came from the 100. But we're basing it on rating each one of those 22 by what's the number of people affected by the issue? How important is that? The seriousness of the issue? The level of public concern or awareness about the issue? And the contribution of the issue to premature death? For example, we know that obesity now has shortened the lifespan of the generation that follows me because of the additional risk and hardships and complications that it adds to one's health. So we're going to be looking at that as well. And then this whole issue about health inequities, and are they associated with the issue? And there are a number of those. And health inequities, it's on your slide that you have in your packet, that it's defined as the differences in health status, death and illness rates across populations that are systemic, avoidable, unfair, and unjust. And the Department of Health and Human Services has actually launched a significant initiative looking at equities in our county. So that's another body of work that I won't go into detail, but it's important as we look in Montgomery County, how do we make change? So these are now the 22 priority issues that have been gleaned from the more than 100 indicators. And this is preliminary, but this is where our steering committee will now begin its work. And under each one of those 22, they don't really just stand alone. There are things that are built in there. For instance, if we're talking about access to care, that really includes, you know, the routine doctor visit, health insurance coverage, could someone not see a doctor when they needed to because they couldn't afford it? The senior immunization, that includes really pneumonia and influenza. So each one has subgroups under it. But this is the best we could do to kind of move from looking at 100 to what can we manage and really work with. And cancer, remember, is not just one category. There are many different cancers. So we did the top cancers that kill us in our country and in our county. But these are what we're working on, and I just want you to note that we do include socioeconomic status as an issue of concern. We include safety, whether it's the violent crimes or other things, that's included, as well as the physical environment. So we're trying to keep it broad in our thinking of what we're doing. We were challenged earlier this year in the summer, if you just go back one, that the state of Maryland has also done, and is doing, a state health improvement process. They selected Montgomery County to be the official launch of their initiative that is to set the statewide goals in terms of achieving improved health outcomes. And they have some 39 target areas that they have identified, but they have already stated that they will be integrating and aligning with whatever local or regional efforts that are happening. And so I can tell you right now that for Montgomery County, 30 of those 39 indicators, we already exceed their target goal. But I will remind you again that for Montgomery County, it's not our overall numbers and stats. It's the disparities within them that are of concern. So we're doing fine, but we still have work to do. And of course, many of you remember that back in February, we launched the website, Healthy Montgomery, which embodies the data, the information, the best practices, and various other potential and useful information in terms of news and reports, as well as those indicators. And we have on our website at this time, we've also included the state health improvement process so that anyone, whether student, professional, whomever, can take a look at that and compare what we're doing with what the state is doing in their work. It costs money to maintain, but we're at about $47,000 annually to maintain the maintenance. We have the Healthy Communities Institute out of California.
Right, Berkeley.
Berkeley, thank you, that do those 100 indicators. But when we have some local drill down issues, particularly as we look at information about our hospitals and their outcomes, that's where we have to do that work ourselves. But so it's a joint effort, but it's, I find it a beautiful instrument, and you've got a page of that on the next slide, which you hopefully have seen before. And the things on the right side will change from time to time as we update. But these are the topic areas that are in these gauges. And when it's in the red, we're in trouble. And I know you've had conversations previously about affordable housing. Montgomery County is going towards the red in that area, but there are other things that we do very well, and they're in the green. And when it's, you know, the blue, that really doesn't have a particular comparison. But what I wanted to show you basically in summary, and hopefully you can put up the other slide.
I think Linda handed that out.
Okay, all right. I had a somewhat unfortunate incident this morning that upset my day, but in retrospect, I know it was minor. But it frightened me because some high school kids going to school decided that they wanted to set off what I would call a cherry bomb, but I think the police call an M-18 or something right outside my home. Frightened me, frightened my dogs, and me, always thinking emergency preparedness, I'm thinking, whoa, and I'm thinking the worst. And it took me a while to get my thoughts together, but it motivated me to take another look at what I wanted to share with you. And when I think about building Healthy Montgomery, I'm really thinking about a table, a round table. And I want as many people who want to contribute to be at that table. And I know at that table, we've got to talk about cost, access, and quality of care. I know those are the basic, you know, principles. But I also know that at that table, we have to strive for good communication, information sharing, and coordination if we're going to get something done. And at that table, I envision that the legs of that table include some very basic things, and there are objectives. So yes, one leg is setting those indicators and identifying the gaps, the disparities. And that has to do with our needs assessment. Another leg is going to be the data analysis that we've done. That is so important in the priority setting. And that leads to us involved in all the planning that is important. A third leg of that table that is critical, of course, is that once you plan your work, you've got to work your plan. So then it's the implementation of it. And that's to foster the projects that will get something done in our county that will improve health outcomes for all. And that will be hard, but that's what, that whole round table will hopefully come to agreement of this is what we can and will do, and that we'll support. And then, of course, once you've implemented, you've got to evaluate. You want to know if you've succeeded. You've got to do the performance measures, the evaluation, and the refinements, and then it begins all over again. So it's an ongoing process, but that's a way that I view building Healthy Montgomery. And a thought that I wanted to share with you that got me thinking this way is a quote from Doris Christopher, who wrote, "Come to the Table: A Celebration of Family Life." And she says, "The table is where we mark milestones, divulge dreams, bury hatchets, make deals, give thanks, plan vacations, and tell jokes. It's also where children learn the lessons that families teach: manners, cooperation, communication, self-control, values." And I'll tell you, those kids, they had me thinking about this this morning, and I love them, and I do a lot of work with kids in my church. But I thought about the table and how important coming to the table is for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tillman. Most appreciative of your work and of your presentation. Councilmember Elrich.
I guess I have a question that I've been wondering about for a while, and had similar question a year ago. We're about to embark on a new adventure in healthcare sometime soon. And I wonder how all this fits into that? Because theoretically, how people receive care and who receives care should be different within the next couple of years. And so a strategy that emerges today based on the healthcare situation might be a very different strategy than emerged, that then comes about a year or two from now. And so I'm wondering, are we looking forward and thinking about how those changes will impact what we do? I mean, I've got to say that I understand why we do this, and I think we ought to do this. The county, on innumerable social issues, has stepped in to fill the safety net provided that were non-existent. But we did that, you know, always recognizing that we're stepping in where other people should have frankly been doing the work. And I look at the movement toward healthcare and greater accessibility to healthcare as a good thing, which means that local governments don't have to do, to some extent, rather what we expected out of the federal or state government. So how do we, how do our efforts then dovetail with that?
Our efforts do dovetail with the Personal Protection Affordable Care Act. That will reach its full implementation beginning in 2014 and then increasing. The challenge we have is that that is a program that will afford healthcare coverage in the form of Medicaid or subsidized insurance coverage to more people. We already have a good sense in Montgomery County that there will probably, well, we have about 100, 120,000 uninsured in our county. We estimate that we probably will have about 40,000 people in our county, and of course, things will change over time, but about 40,000 people who will not be eligible for Medicaid or who will not be able to afford the subsidized premiums that the coverage should allow. And we'll have to see how that plays out. But we've already been pretty much convinced, as we followed with the state's Healthcare Reform Coordinating Council and their special committees, that the safety net will continue to be important. And particularly in Montgomery County, where we have the greater diversity, we have more Latinos, we have more ethnic and racial minorities than the Hilltop Institute and Maryland Healthcare Commission built into their assumptions about the projection that the Affordable Care Act would cover some 50% of the current uninsured in Maryland. But even if you take that 50% were their assumptions and you apply it to Montgomery County, that means we're going to have some 40,000, 50,000 people who still will not be covered with care. And that is the challenge for us because, of course, we want the federal government to do its share, we want the state to do its share, and we would like to relieve the burden that we have on local tax dollars. But we still have the reality that there are going to be individuals in our county, whether they're going in and out of coverage or whatever, that will be dependent on the safety net. We also know, and we have the opportunity, that the emphasis of this healthcare reform bill would be to put greater emphasis on prevention, and that that should start bending the cost curve, that we put less in the cost of treatment, and try to encourage people to stay healthy or to get healthy. That is something that is very much in our mindset in our department and also with the steering committee of Healthy Montgomery. So that, we don't have all the answers yet, and I must tell you, I was somewhat, well, I was heartbroken that we didn't get the Community Transformation Grant because that could have given us a great launching for Healthy Montgomery, the process. But I was relieved to see that the state of Maryland did receive an award. And although it's supposed to be for the rural counties, the state of Maryland has felt that the way the grant application was structured was not beneficial to the state as a whole. And they're still putting emphasis on public health leadership, prevention, and how to benefit the entire state, and hopefully Montgomery County as well. So there is alignment. There will be a number of changes. We know that we have been doing feasibility work and initiatives to make sure that we can increase the number of Medicaid providers in our county so that as people go into Medicaid and are not uninsured, that they will have providers. But we know that we also have to change the business plan for public health because fewer people will come directly to our doors, will need to do more in assurance to make sure they're getting the care they should be getting, and if they change in job or income, that they're caught and can get coverage as well. So yes, a lot is in flux, but we are thinking about it all the time. And we did a symposium a year ago in October, looking at what would be the impact of healthcare reform on Montgomery County. And we continue to work on those pieces, and we have a number of partners helping us.
So if you had 40,000 people who continued to need assistance, that would be fewer than we handle today? By about half?
Right, well, in total, yes. Well, let me say, it would be fewer uninsured overall. I mean, if, you know, you frequently have on the Health and Human Services Committee a session on Montgomery Cares, which is, you know, reaching towards 26,000 people that they see. With our other programs, we probably reach about 29,000 people. And if we could remove all of them, we would clearly still have another 29,000 who have need. So there's a high need in our wealthy county that we keep, you know, hearing. But we have those disparities, and that need is there. But it would relieve our burden, and those who are covered can be covered, and we can deal with those who have no other resources.
And I was hoping that the outcome of all this movement on healthcare would be less burden at the local level and
I would hope so too.
And a broadening of who else accepts some of this burden.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Elrich. Councilmember Leventhal.
We do anticipate that when the health exchanges are up and running in 2014, there will be a reduction in the number of the uninsured. The best guess is that today we have about 100,000, and what Dr. Tillman is saying is that once the health exchanges are up and running, that may be cut in half to 50,000. So that would represent a substantial reduction in the number of the uninsured. This is Dr. Tillman when she's excited about something. Dr. Tillman is a very calm and calming personality, and she's the kind of person you want to be, your public health officer in a crisis or at any other time. But she's done an enormous amount of work on this, and this really does represent her vision. And she's done a very good job of describing it, but I want to provide a very simple description of what we will achieve here when we're successful. And I want to really call everyone's attention one more time to the HealthyMontgomery.org website, which is an extraordinary storehouse of good data that tells us where we stand on cancer, on infant mortality, on teen pregnancy, on obesity, on homelessness, on all of these indicators. And it will be updated over time, so we will have time-streamed data so that as we identify policy priorities through this exercise and reinvigorate the Department of Health and Human Services strategic plan, three years from now, five years from now, seven years from now, we will be able to measure, we invested in these priorities, we identified these as the areas we wanted to concentrate on, and now let's look at the data, and let's see whether our efforts have had an impact on the prevalence and incidence of these health conditions. So I think that's the simplest way that I can describe the value of this exercise. Our decisions, as best they can be, should be driven by data, and our, the emphases and priorities that we make in our budgeting processes and in who we appoint to positions and what, and the announcements that we make and the policy decisions that we make should be guided by an overarching sense that these are the areas in which we're concentrating and we're measuring our progress. And so that's, that is, more than anything else, I think, the value that this Healthy Montgomery exercise, which I got to tell you, is really time-consuming. There's a lot of work going into it. Excellent reading, I mean, I'm learning a lot, but it's, you know, it's a lot of homework for the members of this steering committee, and I thank them for their commitment to this because they're delving deep into the literature and into the data to really flesh out the picture of what our health status is in Montgomery County. But the, but the real leader here and the visionary has been Dr. Tillman, so I just want to thank her for her presentation and for her, for her bringing this about. And of course, Uma Alawalia, her boss, who also has laid the groundwork and made sure that it has happened, and all of the staff who have been working on it.
And I think our council is, thanks to you as well, Councilmember Leventhal, because this has been a passion of yours as well. this has been a passion of yours as well. Councilmember Florine.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with what Councilmember Leventhal just said. This website is extraordinary, and we should use it for all our public conversations, in terms of need, poverty, of course, the health issues are related to all that, but as we, as we sort through these competing priorities, as we just did an hour ago, I mean, this is what should illuminate our thinking. And it's a tremendous resource, so thank you for making it available to us and to the public at large.
I thank my colleagues, I thank Dr. Tillman and your team, and I think we are done. Ah, I apologize. Apparently, we're not done.
Okay, good afternoon, and my name is Marcos Pesquera, I'm the Chair of the Commission on Health, and I want to briefly talk to you about some of the Commission on Health work in 2011, and a little bit briefly what we're looking at for 2012. Special thank you to the Department of Health and Human Services, particularly the public health side, obviously Dr. Tillman, Janine Doreen, and as well as our County Council liaison, Linda McMillan, for all their support and insight as we embark in this work. During last year, 2011, we had three committees, the fitness promotion, which we were able to, the month of May, had a fitness proclamation for the county, which Mr. Leventhal presented to the community in downtown Silver Spring, and an activity called Fiesta de las Madres, which over 8,000 participants were there to enjoy this and hear this. The second committee was health equity, and health equity looked at review literature concerning best practices for obesity prevention, and they decided to look at the Center for Disease Control report called Recommended Community Strategies and Measurements to Prevent Obesity in the United States. Out of those 24 strategies for 2012, we went ahead and looked at four out of those 24, because obviously 24 is way too many. And then we also have the Partnerships of Committee, which we work with the Montgomery County Medical Society, to make sure that we get the support of the physician contingency around obesity issues. So the four strategies that we picked for 2012 is, the first one is, communities should improve availability of affordable, healthier food and beverage choices in public health venues, public service venues. Second one is, communities should provide incentives for the production, distribution, and procurement of foods from local farms. Third one is, communities should increase support of breastfeeding. And the fourth one is, communities should increase opportunities for extracurricular physical activity. We begin this process by sending fact-finding letters to Montgomery County Government, MCPS, Parks and Planning, WSSC, as well as Montgomery College. And we're, the result, depending on the result of the answer that comes back from those letters, we'll be able to, at our retreat on October 20th, begin to look at, one of the agencies that already responded, and we're still writing and sending, we'll be sending in the next few months, the other, letters to the other agencies. The four obesity prevention strategies that we looked at, we, they seem simple, however, we, we do know that policy changes do take time. However, it is our vision that all of, for all of our Montgomery County residents, we want the healthier choice to be the easy choice. So again, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with you for improvement of the health and well-being of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I apologize for having prematurely terminated, and thank you for your contribution to our community. Mr. Leventhal.
Yeah, I just want to say to my good friend Marcos Pesquera, we are having a discussion here at the County Council about how many boards and commissions there are, and how to re-empower the Committee Evaluation and Review Board. But that is not anyone's intent, not my intent or anyone else, to get rid of all the boards and commissions. I think that the Commission on Health is very much on the high end in terms of its substantive contribution to policymaking, and I think both of the bills that have been introduced in this area have, I anticipated that they would be misunderstood, and I think they have been misunderstood, but that's all right, we'll have time to have a dialogue about them. But I just, I thank you for your presentation, and I very much thank the Commission on Health for its work, and I certainly have every expectation that the Commission on Health will continue to delve into these policy areas and advise the executive and council for, forever.
And forever has come. We are done for this.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Amendments. This bill would suspend the property credit for solar or geothermal energy devices, clarify that a property owner must own a solar or geothermal energy device or energy conservation device to be able to receive a property tax credit, and generally amend county law related to the renewable energy property tax credit. A Government Operations Committee work session is tentatively scheduled for Monday, October 31, 2011, at 10:30 a.m. Persons wishing to submit additional material for the council's consideration should do so before the close of business Wednesday, October 26, 2011. And we have one speaker for this item, and that is Mike Hevner, representing Geosolar Energy. Yes. Have a seat, sir, and you can, there's a button in front of you that will turn on your microphone.
The big button?
Yes.
Ah, the red button. Yes, I'm Michael Hevner, owner and president of Geosolar Energy in Gathersburg, Dave Sealy's with me, he works with the firm. And we've been in the business for 35 years, renewable energy. And we represent the big German firm Bosch, and we're doing what's called geothermal geo systems. I'm going to use the term geo, which covers geothermal, geosolar, which we call it, the groundwater heat pumps, that's a whole broad technology, but that's what we're talking about. And I'm going to use the collective "we," which means our dealers. We have dealers all over Maryland, the company Bosch, and the equipment's made in Florida, and our firm, so that's sort of the royal "we." As I said, we have been in business for 35 years, we're the oldest renewable energy firm, I believe, still in business. We got created as a result of the oil embargo of 1973. I built my own house, and I put geo in the house, and that led me into the business. So we've done about 1,000 systems throughout the area over the years. The tax credit, thank you very much, it worked, you know, draw a lot of attention to this, and we probably sold a number of systems as a result of it. I have, oh, and Bosch, interestingly enough, builds this equipment in the U.S. and actually exports these units to Germany. U.S. is the bigger market, but it's interesting that they're sending them over, and then German automobiles are coming into the U.S., so it's sort of a positive story out of, out of this business. Our technology is rated number one of the renewables by EPA, in that it is the most cost-effective, cost-efficient, and it works whether the sun's out, whether it's winter, and you can install it anywhere and everywhere. All Montgomery County schools built in the last five years have been equipped with geo, and that includes the retrofits, including the, whoops, okay.
You have one minute, one minute to finish.
I'm requesting two things, three things actually today, if you could give us some time to close all the current customers that we're talking with, rather than retroacting it back to September the 20th, I mean, that caused us a lot of problems. Secondly, we'd like to see the HELP program get started again, that was a bill you passed about a year or two ago. And the last one is, if you could include, if you could include this, a copy, require builders to put a copy of the energy analysis in with the homeowners, so they know what all these different energy costs are. That's our number one problem, the public just doesn't know about renewable energy. And not that they have to offer it or anything, but just make, and you're doing that on used houses now, or houses that are resold. They have to have two years of energy records, where you could do the same thing on new houses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hevner, for your comments, and if you can turn your microphone back off, thank you. Councilmember Leventhal.
I assume the Chair of the TNE Committee has his light on as well, and I, yeah, so I'd be happy to yield to him. I mean, I guess we could engage, what I'd like to do is maybe, if he's willing, I'd like to engage him in a colloquy. Mr. Hevner had some questions, and I just want to thank Mr. Hevner for being here, and thank him for the early leadership, that you were, you know, providing renewable energy before renewable energy was cool. So that's, that's very, very impressive, and you're certainly the sort of business that, I mean, there's many sorts of business that we want to encourage, but you're one of them, and we appreciate what you're doing in the county. What I'd like to do is engage Mr. Berliner in a colloquy, because what I understand is that, the problem is the money ran out, that if we leave this program open, and if people apply, they're not going to get the benefit. And, and I co-sponsored this bill with regret, because unfortunately, our good intentions haven't been backed up with our budgetary capacity. And so, and you asked me here privately, and I just want to make it public as to when this would become effective, because I understand the point of your testimony is that you have potential customers who have yet to close the deal with you, but the reality is, I don't think those customers are going to get the tax credit, given the queue that's lined up. But, so I guess my, my question for Mr. Berliner, who's the prime sponsor of this, I'm one of several co-sponsors, is, first of all, projecting forward, this, we're having the public hearing now, and there's an October 31st date for Government Operations Committee consideration, I could direct the question to the Chair of that committee as well. Assuming that the committee made a recommendation, would we anticipate that the effective date of this would indeed be September 20th, as in the bill, or would we do the routine thing that is, you know, committee recommends to full council, council acts, it goes into effect 30 days after enactment? I just, Mr. Hevner asked for some clarity on that, and I think he's entitled to some.
The, I thank my colleague for the question, and we, I had a brief colloquy with Mr. Hevner as well with respect to this. Just appreciate that this was a conscious decision to put the date in at the day that the bill was introduced, because what I did not want to do, and it is a subject that of course can be changed by the will of the council, was to create a context in which people then, if we had put in the bill without an effective date, or say, an effective date of January 1, we would created a window in which people would have gone out and tried to line up new business in order to take advantage of that, which we basically have concluded we don't have to offer.
Which, which would in effect, unless I'm missing the point, be a false promise. If we advertised that this thing was still available, the line of people waiting for it is so long, they're not going to get it.
Well, they're going to get it maybe in six, seven years, I mean, we have to work our way through, so we'd be adding to the queue at a time when we made a judgment that the queue was long enough, and we want to put a stop to it. So that was why the date was picked as of the date of introduction, so we didn't create what we've seen in the development community and otherwise, where we've seen there's a rush to come forward. So it was a conscious decision, I can understand where, from an entrepreneurial perspective, that it doesn't work to Mr. Hevner's benefit, and, but that's the choice that was made at the time. If majority of my colleagues believed that that was a bad choice, then we can discuss that. I wanted to share with Mr. Hevner, you'd also talked about the HELP program, and understand that, I promise you, no program is more painful for me than, than the fact that the federal government, not Montgomery County, has stepped in through the federal regulators, not the Obama administration, but independent regulators, and who have said that if people were to take advantage of our HELP program, they would be in violation of their mortgage. Now, there are some counties which are going forward nonetheless with the HELP program, with that in big, bold type. If you take this loan from your local government, you may be deemed to be in violation of your mortgage. We have not made that decision here, okay? But understand that I share your despair with respect to it, I'm working with a national coalition to try and bring about change in federal law that would basically overturn the independent regulators' view with respect to that, and working real hard on that. And your third point, I feel, was with respect to the notice on new homes, our, our expectation, of course, is that with new homes, they will be meeting the very strict requirements for energy efficiency that we've adopted in our county, and as you observed, for older homes, we did pass legislation that required people to give the bill. So I feel like we've, we've gone pretty far in that regard, there is still confusion as to what the cost of solar is and things of that nature, and to the extent to which our Department of Environmental Protection hasn't put on their website that kind of information, that might be a conversation worth pursuing, because there is confusion about it. But I want to thank you also for, for your good work on behalf of our community and our planet.
Councilmember Leventhal.
No, that's it, I, I just appreciate working with Roger on these issues. Like Roger, I think if, if only we had the resources, these programs would be and should be very, very high priorities to encourage a reduction in carbon emissions and develop new industries and, and the kind of clean jobs that we want to encourage, and sadly, many of these priorities have gone by the wayside because of our budgetary problems. And I, I would like, I would have liked to have introduced a bill that would provide robust funding and a continuation of these tax credits instead of having to terminate it.
Just for the record, suspend it.
Suspend it.
Councilmember Elrich.
I just wanted to let you know that I share the same concerns that my other colleagues have, we're suspending this under duress, we're not suspending it, because I think it was a bad idea. My question for, for Roger in response to this question is, if we, if we've essentially run out of money, there's no...
It isn't that we've run out of money per se, okay? Let's be real clear, we had basically, I believe, appropriated something on the order of $400,000 a year for this program, that has, the demand for the program is six times that level. So it isn't that we've run out of money, we only allocated a certain amount of money, and the demand for it outstripped at six to one. So now we are six years behind in terms of paying for this program.
Right, so the issue for new applicants, or people, potential customers, is there's no way that they'd have any ability to get into this and actually see anything for years and years and years.
For years and years and years. And so the, the value judgment was that we didn't want to offer what we perceived to be false promises to our community, and, and that's why we felt like we had to make change. Plus, with, I would also say that if we were to continue this program at some point in the future, we would change the benefit level, that when we established the property tax credit, it was set at a level, quite frankly, that was prior to solar energy becoming much more competitive than it is today. And so we're actually spending more money per unit than we should, and that we could spread it out and have more people benefit. So when we are in a position to go forward, we would reduce the amount of the benefit, and therefore be able to share it more broadly.
Okay, yes, sir.
We've been telling people that, you know, there's a six-year backlog. Interestingly enough, most of them who put this in can deal with it, they plan to live there for, you know, six years. So it's not like we're, you know, you guys or we are faking them out on the thing, or whatever. Again, I just request if you could do some orderly shutdown, because we're probably going to have some angry customers if you go back to September the 20th, so that's, that's it. Maybe I ought to meet with some, some of you offline about my proposal on providing the homeowner some idea. We have builders putting in propane right now, which is the most outrageous fuel, you know, it's four times more expensive than normal fuel, and yet they're putting it in houses, and homeowners are totally oblivious to what it costs, until they've lived in the house for a year, and then they find out their bills are $10,000, $15,000. Yep, a lot of, and they're big, big builders like Mitchell and Best and Envy Ryan, and they're putting propane in the houses. So if you had some, you know, homeowner knew what he was buying, he'd have some idea, even though it wouldn't be precise, so. even though it wouldn't be precise, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm sure there are members of the council who welcome your visit to their offices to talk about your proposal. So thank you for being here. Okay, we're on to item number nine. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is a public hearing on an amendment to the Montgomery County Public Schools FY11 through 16 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of $1,850,000 in state aid, Qualified Zone Academy Bonds for the Planned Lifecycle Asset Replacement Program. Action is scheduled immediately following this hearing. There are no speakers for this hearing, but we have, an action has been moved by Council Member Berliner, seconded by Councilmember Navarro, and all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and that is unanimous among those present. So we have a interview, some interviews with the Board of Appeals at 2:00, immediately following adjournment. I just want to say before we go that I had meant to mention this earlier, but on behalf of the council, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Navarro for being appointed to President Obama's Advisory Commission on Hispanic Education. And as soon as she was tapped for that position, the following day, I think it was, she, she went right to work. So we're very proud of you, and thank you very much. So we'll see everybody up on the sixth floor.